This time I'd like to call to order the regularly scheduled council meeting for the city of Twinsburg on January 13th. Shannon, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Fury?
Here.
Mr. McDermott?
Here.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Here.
Mr. Roden?
Here.
Mr. Sorese?
Here.
Mr. Scofidi?
Here.
Mr. Yates?
Here.
Could we please stand and have Mr. Yates lead us in the prayer and pledge of allegiance?
Father, we seek your guidance for the business that is before us. In planning for the future, the city of Twinsburg gives us vision. Guide us to make decisions that are not self-serving but for the betterment of our community so we can continue to move in a positive direction. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any changes or amendments to the minutes from our December 9th meeting? Hearing none, the minutes stand as written. Do we have any awards or presentations this evening?
We do not.
Okay. And now we'll move to audience participation. Shannon, would you call the first person?
Yes. Holly Harris.
Hello again, council members. As I stated before, my name is Holly Harris. Do I have to state my address?
Yes, please.
1541 Treefern Court.
And you have five minutes.
I have five minutes.
And we'll give you a one-minute notice when you're done, or when it's coming up.
Just throw a rock at me or something?
No, no rocks, no shoes. We politely ask you to move on.
Okay. As you probably already know, I did email each of you, my house is the closest house to this proposed path that's going to connect the Glenwill Trails with the Twinsburg Trails. Now, the first thing that I want to bring up is a little bit of common sense, okay? My property line extends to a small drop-off that goes to the back of my property, and from that drop-off, it goes to the creek. Now, that drop-off is a flood plain. Every single spring and every single autumn, it's underwater, okay? So, the common sense is that if you put a path there and the floodwaters are sitting there, people are going to have to walk through my property in order to connect from where the floodwater starts to where the floodwater ends. Now, granted, I really don't want strangers walking in my backyard. So, that's the common sense point of view. The other reason, point of view, is that I have a lot of nature in my backyard. I bought my house in August. The reason why I bought that house and the big selling point for me was, I looked out that window and I said, "I love this view. No one's ever going to take it away from me." And then I found out, there's a proposal to take that away from me. Again, I don't want people walking in my backyard. I don't want people walking behind my house. If it's on the other side of the creek, I'm okay with that, but not on my property. Now, the other thing that I want to tell you is that I'm a single white female. Yeah, I have my own house. Not only that, I have been a victim of violent crime. I don't want to have to erect a fence to feel safe. I would much rather have this path somewhere else. This path emerges from the woods. It's on a recessed area, and it goes back into the woods. The only houses that have visibility to this part of the path behind my house are three houses, two of which are angled away. Anyone could emerge from the woods, come onto my property, and go back into the woods very easily. Right now, the only access to my house, to my backyard, is to go in between. To access my house from the backyard, you have to go from the front, in between the houses, to get into my backyard. Your path is going to have several people, as you said before, walking through my backyard. I'm very much opposed to this. I'm sorry, that's my point of view, and I think you'll agree with me. If you think of your mothers, your sisters, and your daughters, would you want a public path that close to their backyard? The path will literally be from my deck to the creek, not even the width of this room, from that table to that table. That's how close it is. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Shannon?
Next, we have Kathy Benacci.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Mrs. Benacci.
My name is Kathy Benacci, and I live at 11327 Heritage Drive. Now, I am going to open up by saying, thank you for allowing residents these five minutes. I've lived in several other cities throughout Ohio and went in Florida, and I've never had the opportunity to get in front of council like this. I've also never had the opportunity to ever tell someone how proud I am of the city, how proud I am that we've been on the Travel Channel, the Discovery Channel, about Twins Days. What an icebreaker at the party. So, thank you. I'm very proud of this city. I never grew up here. I'm from the west side. My dad asked me one time, "Do you need a passport to go over to Twinsburg?" I said, "Dad, you live in Seven Hills. We're not that far." Okay. So, why I'm here. During the last council meeting, a handful of Ward 1 residents spoke their thoughts regarding this multipurpose trail from Glenwillow to Twinsburg. All were opposed. There may be four or five. Now, I sat in back, and I wondered if other residents felt the same way. I wanted to find out. So, on probably one of the coldest days of December, Saturday, December 20th, I put my heaviest coat on, and I went out in 31-degree weather, going house to house. What did these residents think about the trail? I was not there to dissuade or persuade. I just wanted to listen, just to listen. I walked to my neighbors on Treefern Court, then I went to Woodchuck, and then a good portion along Heritage Drive. Basically, I took a survey. I took a survey. Now, I am going to say this, that on these three sheets are 42 signatures of those that are opposed to this ordinance regarding the trail. At the top, and I'll read for you, "We, residents of City of Twinsburg, Ohio, are opposed to the multipurpose trail linking the village of Glenwillow to the city of Twinsburg, as set forth in Resolution 702014, approved by Twinsburg City Council on June 10, 2014." What I'm not going to cover is the reasoning for such opposition. I only have five minutes. This would take much longer than that. Now, being an honest and fair person, I am also going to let you know, I also went with and favor of. Again, my point was to listen, not persuade or dissuade anyone. There are no signatures on the approved, none. Now, I'm going to be honest also. There were two residents that did tell me. "Kath, I'm not going to sign anything as of right now. I want more information." Totally agree with that. I'm fine. Again, I'm just here to listen. In business, when a company takes a survey, they use a sample to represent the whole. So...
One minute.
Okay, thank you. So, in looking at these signatures, what is the conclusion? The residents don't want this trail. One last thought. If trails are so valuable to residents, why wasn't a trail included in the Corbett Farm Development Plans? So, with this information I've now shared with you, one last comment. If people oppose it, you need to revoke it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Shannon?
Yes. Next, we have Sally Gadosh.
I just want to, excuse me, Sally Gadosh, 9250 Liberty Road. I just want to make one comment. My concern of addressing this rezoning for the C5 district was based upon the map that was submitted to the clerk for review required by law. So, my reference to the map in the C5 hearing of this parcel was based upon the evidence that you used for us to make our comments. That's for you, Mr. Yates. I'm not going to reiterate too much of what I did say. I have a recording of it. My concern is that the 60 parcels or so properties were never properly rezoned. The ordinance was ordinance, doesn't even have it on the ballot, Issue 32, 2008, so that would be Issue Ordinance 69, 2008. And I do have the ballot, and the language of the heading of the ballot is "Proposed Zoning Amendment: Mixed-Use Resident Business Regulations." That is all. It had nothing about rezoning 60 parcels of land. It never mentioned the parcel numbers. It never mentioned the addresses. It never had a public hearing. Now, I just want to make one point. I get no pleasure in having to challenge all these things. This is not a convenience in my life, and if you don't feel that we should be voting on these things, then recommend that we change our charter government to statutory government, and then you can do whatever you want under the state law. But in the meantime, remember, you're going to be walking the streets, many of you, very shortly, asking people, "Vote for me. Vote for me. Put the signs in the yard. Support me." You need to remember, during that four-year term, that vote to get you elected is the same vote that the people are saying, "Hear us. This is our government. This is time." I'm so disappointed. I am so disappointed. Ward meetings are absolutely not even an option anymore, and the first time in the history of this city, we haven't had ward meetings. Why? We come to you at ward meetings and ask our questions. You explain to us what you're doing. Why have they been eliminated? We're being locked out of our government, and not only, and I don't want to get into all that, I'm just telling you how important our votes are to us, and they should be important to you other than when you're running for office. I just want to say to Mr. Maestros, you know, we had an agreement. I agreed to pay $15,000 legal fees. I paid them, and shortly thereafter, the judge ordered that you should pay them. But I made an agreement, I made an agreement, and my attorney made the agreement, that I would pay the legal fees if you took the issue off the ballot to deny us a right to vote on 7801, which was totally misleading as an issue. Also, without telling tales, I think, Mr. Maestros, it's time that we probably open this up. At that meeting, it was discussed that Title III is, without saying, a mess. And I mentioned that to you, Mr. Fury. I had evidence to you that Title III had been amended without our vote. Title III was a disaster. Now, it basically has been agreed to that, and someday, you're going to have to address it. Now, we see a map in the same condition. Just please, take a look at these things. Remember, this is our charter. This is our right to vote. If you feel that it's an inconvenience for us to have a vote in charter, suggest to the people that they change the form of government back to the state ordered statutory form. That can happen, and then we won't have a charter right.
One minute.
But I voted, and I've worked hard for that charter 27 years ago, and as long as I'm able, I'm not going to stop, and I'm not going to go to court and hire any more attorneys. I'm going to embarrass all of us. I'll go to the courts pro se. I'm 86-years-old, and I'll go in front of the judge, and I'll say, "I can't afford any more attorneys, nor can you. And if I win, you won't have to pay, and I won't have to pay, but we're going to have a right to vote." So, just remember those things. That's important to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Gadosh. Shannon, is there anybody else on the list?
There is not.
Thank you. Next, we'll move to committee reports, council committee reports and communication. Mr. Scofidi, you're not going to work?
Thank you, Mr. Fury. Good evening, everybody. I hope everybody had a nice holiday season, and it's good to be back and conducting city business once again. The only report I have this evening is, the border zoning appeals will meet tomorrow night at 6:30. That's the 14th, and then they will meet again on the 28th, Wednesday, the 28th, at 6:30 as well. I do have one other thing. During the holiday season, I attended the holiday party for our senior citizens, and I just want to say that it was another great success. It's always a nice party, and nice to see all of our senior residents there, and thank you to all of those that helped put that together. It was a great event, and that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Yates?
Yes, thank you. The Finance Committee met this evening. I believe Mr. Sorese will give a report on that. None of my other committees have met. Like Mr. Scofidi, I also attended the holiday party for the seniors, and it's just that if you've never seen that or been part of that event, it's quite remarkable, and it seems, I think, it was probably 400 or 500 people that were in attendance, and it seems to keep growing. The tables got closer. I don't know if they can get any more tables, so we eliminate the band in there, but it's a great event, and it's just so well put on by the city and Laura. I wasn't able to attend the whole event, but the Chamber Business Person of the Year was also over the holiday season. I just want to congratulate Tim Edgington for that award this year, and that's all I have.
Mr. McDermott?
Well, thank you very much. I, too, attended the Christmas party, and it was a great time. You should mark it on your calendar for next year. It's really great. We had a committee report from the... I'm sorry.
Finance?
Yeah, we had a committee report from the Finance Meeting. Mr. Sorese will give a report, I'm sure. Thank you.
Thank you. I attended a December 15th Planning Commission meeting, and the items on the agenda were the final site plan for a combined eight-foot sidewalk over on Liberty Road in conjunction with Reminderville, as well as the township. There was also discussion with a lighting plan with Corbett's Farm Subdivision, and at that time, we actually did add and move some lights around so that it would be well-lit. No action was taken regarding those items that evening. On January 5th, we did, though, take action, or the Planning Commission did take action on the final site plan for the eight-foot sidewalk on Liberty Road. There were some questions originally on some drainage and some easements that were all answered, and the board passed it unanimously, 5-0. They also looked at or discussed an overview that Amy Moore presented on upcoming projects for the city this year. I saw on a roundtable that some people were asking about, "When's 91 going to be paved?" Okay, 91's going to be paved in the summer. It's going to be ground and resurfaced from the Hudson Line through the township up to Post Road, and that's one of the things we're going to address tonight. We're going to have some noise restrictions so they can work in the industrial zones at night so that the traffic's not bad and it's not going to inconvenience people, but when it's in the residential portion of 91, you've got to do it in the daytime so that you don't keep people up all night. So, that'll be addressed later this evening. I don't remember the resolution, but we're going to get to it towards the end. We're also going to be, and that's supposed to happen in July, I believe. June? June. Thank you very much. The benefit of having Amy here, she can correct me as I look at her. She'll just keep feeding me the right answers. We're also going to be doing the widening from Post to Glenwood. This is the first stage of a two-stage project. I've already had residents, in fact, there was a chamber event with Mr. Sorese. People were saying, "Hey, what are you going to do? What's the plan going to be to have traffic move back and forth there?" And Amy went through, and we're going to construct a lane on one side of the road, an additional temporary lane, so that we can have two lanes of traffic going while they work on one side, and when they finish the other side, they'll flip. So, there'll always be two lanes of traffic from 91, from Post to Glenwood while that is going on. July? The start will be July. Later tonight, we're going to talk about Hillsdale Waterline and road upgrade. That'll be starting in February. And the Chamber and Sanitary Sewer Lines, we're going to also be on tonight's agenda. One thing that there's going to, we're going to have a survey done, or in the process of a survey, for a noise study for 82 to see if we can get those barriers off of 48014 as other cities have to isolate some of the Ward 2 and Ward 3 areas just regarding sound from the highway now that the usage has picked up. And I think that pretty much covers everything, or a lot that you've covered, but I know that there were some questions on when we're fixing the roads, and that's one of them. Our next Planning Commission meeting is Monday, January 26th. At this time, there's no items on the agenda. If there aren't, the meeting will be canceled. I also attended the Christmas party, and yes, I think that either I got bigger or the tables got pushed together because it was tough to get around that room and pass out all those door prizes. I also had an opportunity to go to a first-time event in the city of Twinsburg that Seth Roden and David Post put on regarding a Jewish lighting ceremony. And, you know, I'm Catholic, so I don't know much about Judaism at all, so I went to learn more, and I tell you what, I did. I asked a lot of questions, but it was really well-attended. I mean, we had the community center packed. The mayor was there. Mr. Yates was there. Mr. Scofidi was there, and really well-attended, and it really, I believe it's going to be an annual event, but I want to thank you for first bringing it to my attention and then putting the work together to make the success that was in conjunction with David Post. So, thank you very much. And that's all I have this evening. Thank you. Mr. Roden, you're up.
I can't follow that. No, I really, none of my committees have met, so I have no report tonight, but thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Sorese?
Thank you. The Finance Committee met earlier tonight, as was stated earlier. We discussed several different things. We were looking at a proposal from Ms. Walaznik to change the sick leave cash-out basis, looking at using that with our hospitalization program. The Finance Committee unanimously recommended, and that will be coming forth to council in the future. We also discussed looking at hiring a new bond counselor, a presentation from Ms. House with a recommendation, and the Finance Committee, again, voted unanimously to forward that to council for their decision on that. I also attended the Chamber Person of the Year luncheon, and I want to offer congratulations again to Tim Edgington, who was selected as our Person of the Year, and also, we honored Liz and Dave Murch for a lifetime achievement at Richener Hardware, which I'm sure most people are aware of with their service to this community, and again, that was a very nice event. Twins Days Committee will meet tomorrow night. They were supposed to meet last week, but the meeting was postponed or delayed a week because of the bad weather last Wednesday, and that's the end of my report. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Mrs. Stoffer?
Hi. The ARB met on December 18th. There were two items on the agenda. One was a double-sided aluminum planter sign for express employment professionals. It was approved with a few changes, so it was approved as noted. There's another, another was a wall sign that was also approved as noted. Those are both on December 18th. On January 8th, there was another meeting, Case 150101, 2027 Meadowwood Boulevard. It was a new single-family home. It was also approved with some changes. And Case 1501, the Meadows, the Fairway, they had some replacement planter signs for anything that's green, and all of those were approved as well. Case 150103, there was another illuminated wall sign for Twinsburg Health Mart. This was approved as noted as well, and then another non-illuminated sign for image that by ES Sign Group, and that was approved as well. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Mayor Prokop?
Thank you, Mr. Fury. Good evening, everybody. Nice to see you all, and Happy New Year. Glad you're all back, and we're getting the year rolling again. 2015 is here, and we're set to go. So, first of all, I would like to thank everybody. We had a tremendous holiday season, just really enjoyed it. Our Parks and Rec Department did a great job coordinating with township. We lit up City Hall. We had a walk down to the Township Square where the Township members lit up the square, the new Christmas tree, lots of activity, lots of fun. It was a tremendous evening. It was called Luminosity, and it was the first annual luminosity. We will be doing that again in the future. Thank you, Derek. I know that you had a really short time span to get that off the ground, just a matter of a few weeks, but you put together a great event. I believe about 1,000 people were there, and it will be a repeat event because everyone enjoyed it. We had lots of great feedback. So, that is going to be an annual way to kick off the holiday season, and the holiday season, so many of our departments participated this year, which was really, really cool. Besides the Parks Department, our Police Department did a fill-a-cruiser event that was right around Thanksgiving, collecting food for those who needed, and then they did a shop-with-the-cop event. This year, they were able to take 31 children to shop in the stores for Christmas gifts, and it was just amazing. Last year was five children. This year was 31, so they got a lot more support, raised a lot more money. So, congratulations to our Police Department. Dan Fido, in particular, he's a police officer that does a lot of work in organizing these events and does a great job, and Officer Donato, and so many others. We really appreciate that. We know the community appreciates that. It's so nice to have them out there and being involved and seen in the community. Our Fire Department, they did their first annual breakfast with Santa. It was a pancake breakfast at the Fire Department. Kids loved it. Parents loved it, and I know the firefighters loved it, having everybody come in and being able to see the equipment and join meeting the firefighters. Another great time had by y'all. And also, the Santa Run, quite successful, wasn't it, Chief? I understand it was a lot of fun, and again, community got involved. Many of the kids from our school system were dressed up as elves and really enjoyed being involved in that event. So, nice interaction between our safety forces and the community, and even including many of our students here in the city. Again, the Parks and Recreation had their winter wonderland. I know that they helped with the Hanukkah celebration that Seth Roden and Dave Post hosted for the first time this year. I went. I had lockkeys and really enjoyed them, had lots of fun, and a great meal. So, congratulations to everybody who really, really came together and made the holiday season such an enjoyable place to be in Twinsburg here, getting ready for all of our family and friend fund that we had over the course of that holiday. Also, my congratulations to our Business Person of the Year, Tim Edgington from Edward Jones. I've known Tim for many years, and he is truly deserving of that award. He's a great businessperson, but besides being a great businessperson, Tim just jumped right into the community when he opened up his business here in the city of Twinsburg. Immediately got involved in the Chamber of Commerce, the Rotary. Anything that's going on in the city, Tim is a supporter, and we really appreciate that. He takes his commitment to the city very seriously, and I was very delighted that the Chamber of Commerce selected him as the Business Person of the Year. Just a couple announcements this evening. First of all, I don't see Chief Noga here, so I'm going to mention it. Officer Dan Biata, he is an officer in the Twinsburg Police Department. He was named as the Assistant Commander of the Summit Metro Crash Response Team. He was appointed to that position by their team's Board of Directors. He's a longtime or a long-term member of that investigative team. He's a long-time or a long-term member of that investigative team. And this is a great relationship that we have with Summit County. And again, we have one of our officers participating in one of their teams, the investigation team is used in Summit County. He brings back the knowledge to our department, uses it in our department and helps other officers learn about it. So congratulations, Officer Dan Biata. We're very proud of you and it's a well-deserved position that you were appointed to. Also, we have a police officer exam coming up, that's February 8th at 1:00 PM at Dodge Intermediate School. Applications must be submitted in person beginning January 26th through February 6th. So again, if you're interested in a position in the Twinsburg Police Department, let's get the word out to everyone we know, now's the time to come in, get an application and take the test. So we're looking forward to that. In fact, we are looking for up to five new officers. We've had lots of retirements, we've had promotions. We have a new position of Assistant Chief in the Fire, in the Police Department. So up to five new positions here in the city of Twinsburg. It's a very exciting transition for the department, having young men come in and women and being trained in our department and by our officers. They have to, of course, have certain training certification before they can even take the test, but nevertheless, to work with our department and informing their careers. So lots of exciting things going on in the city of Twinsburg. And other than that, I would like to turn the reports over to our Finance Director, Karen House.
Good evening, everyone. I have an important announcement that was put out by Regional Income Tax Agency informing all of the residents that they are providing a free municipal income tax return preparation service. What they do is each year, they select various communities and they alternate every year on their selection of what communities they will provide this type of service. This year, the closest one to Twinsburg would be Solon Grantwood Golf Course, the Banquet Room at 38855 Aurora Road. And again, that's in Solon. It's on a first-come, first-served basis, depending on the size of the turnout. That date is March 10th and it will be held from 1:00 PM to 7:00 PM. Again, this is assistance to help fill out your municipal income tax return. So if you have any questions, please feel free to direct your question to Regional Income Tax Agency as far as the dates. But as far as I know, no changes occurred. Also, just to let you know, we have received our first distribution for January 2015. It is an advance distribution only. The final report will be given at the second council meeting of this month. But thus far, we are down by 38%. And again, that has, could have a lot to do with the distribution of the advanced funding. So that's why I'll give a full report on the collection at the next council meeting. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you, Karen. Karen, also, our end-of-the-year final income tax revenue, that was down...
By 8%.
About 8%, a little over 8%.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Now we have Chief Morgan, Fire Department.
Good evening. In the month of December, the Twinsburg Fire Department responded to 252 calls for service. That is a record for our department. The previous record was 221 calls in July of 2011. So this was kind of a big jump in us for call volume. As a result, we ended the year 27 calls ahead of the previous year as far as our total call volume for the year. And beyond that, in fire prevention, we completed 89 fire inspections during the course of December. There are two past due. We also completed eight fire education sessions. We also opened seven fire investigations during the course of December and were able to close all seven of those as well. In training, we completed 55 different training sessions through the course of the month involving fire EMS and rescue topics. Beyond that, just want to advise the council that we will be including with setting up the permanent appropriations for 2015, some additional requests for capital funding. We had requested funding for new power cots and load systems for our med units in 2014. Concurrently, we applied for a grant. The rules of the grant are that we have to spend their money first and we didn't get their money until today. So as a result, we're going to try to re-appropriate those funds to make that purchase in 2015. The grant was $40,000, which represents about 30% of the cost of the project. So I just want to let you know that that'll be coming as part of the permanent appropriations. And I do want to also mention the holiday events. We want to thank all those that helped us. Parks and Recreation were actually the, the breakfast with Santa host. We were just the venue of choice for this year. I don't know that we're going to do that every year, but maybe periodically for a change of venue. But we, we did enjoy meeting so many of the residents. And also, we want to acknowledge all those that helped us with the Santa gift run. We delivered over 300 packages to 164 different stops over the course of five hours. A lot of involvement by our personnel planning the routes. And we just want to thank all those who helped us also in the preparation and the, and the process of delivering all those gifts. That's my report for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Derek, Parks and Recreation?
Good evening. We talked about ordinance 1, I think, 2015 already. If you have any additional questions about that, I'm here. In regards to the Fitness Center, which which has opened inside the facility? If you haven't been aware, it's, I think it opened on Thursday, so we're less than a week in. I recommend you trying, trying it out. It's still kind of a soft opening, there hasn't really been much besides Facebook posts and email blasts sort of thing, but nothing in the paper as of yet advertisement-wise. But welcome you, the residents. You don't have to be a member, it's not inside the Fitness Center doors. You can stop on in, you can actually order by an app. We're getting a good relationship already established with them to help with some of our events and kind of cross-promote. So it's a, you come to their facility, you know, it gets our facilities some visibility as well. So we're looking forward to starting that partnership with them. Another big, big thing going on in the department is our community theater group is, has the performance of Shrek. We've just kind of moved into the high school, all the props, they moved out of the theater workshop mostly down to the high school. Performance dates are February 7th, 8th, 13th, 14th, and 15th. I hope I said February 7th, 8th, 13th, 14th, 15th. Tickets are $8 in advance, $10 at the door. They do play, take place at the high school. As everyone's mentioned, we had holidays, probably, I've been here almost 20 years now. It's been the craziest holiday season I think I've ever had here. It is just one thing after another, but we had great weather, we had great participation, we had great excitement. It was really great to see everyone out and about and excited about this and the Hanukkah event that came on board kind of at the last minute too. It was great, you know, had some, I, I learned a lot, like Mr. Fury said. I was kind of out of the loop, I learned words I've never, I had to order things I've never ordered before. So I appreciate the education on that. And a new thing for us, we're going to be running our own USA Swim team here shortly. It's in March, so we're getting the word out to the residents to come on in and sign up, sign up for that, the Fitness Center. And the Fitness Center is celebrating, we're in our 16th year, so we're going to have a Sweet 16 party for the Fitness Center in March. So you'll all be invited to that. We have the Adult Egg Hunt coming up. I'm saying it out there now, everyone's always clamoring about it. When it is, it is March 20th. Tickets will go on sale February 25th at 6:00 PM. That is a council meeting night, so you have to come an hour early and get your tickets. Since I'll be at that council meeting, we're going to kill two birds with one stone. We're in major planning for summer mode. If anyone's looking for jobs, it should be shortly up on the website in the next week or two for summer jobs, for lifeguards, day camp leaders, Safety Town, swim lesson instructors, swim team coaches, that sort of thing. It's all should be up, applications should be available at the city's website here in the next couple of weeks, so check that out. We're in full Rock the Mar, Rock the Park planning mode, scheduling all the bands. And those city residents who had garden plots last year is now you can get your garden plots for this year. You have been able to for the last seven months, but we're running out. In February, we open them up to other people. So you want, if you want to reserve your same spot that you had last year, you need to do that, do that now. And all the camp information, I know parents are concerned about that for the summer, will be available in the next few weeks as well. Oh, oh, sorry, I do have one more thing. Sorry. In going along with my public art concept, I'm trying to get a little bit more public art into the city. The Akron Children's Hospital selected Twinsburg as one of their 25 locations to put up a, it's called a blooming work of art. They're going to donate a seven-to-nine-foot-tall steel flower that will be in some part of the Twinsburg. We haven't picked the exact location of it. It's no cost to us, they pay for it all, they install it for all, we just have to keep it up for a year. And then after that point, we can determine if we want to move it, if we want to take it down. There's a picture on here, I'll let you all take a look at it. It's not going to be this particular flower, they're going to make every flower in the 25 different cities different. And then they kind of promote and let people know where all the flowers are and you kind of tour and find all the flowers in the city. I think it's a good way to drive people in and a good little piece of artwork for our residents to enjoy. That's all I have.
Thank you, Derek.
Thanks, Derek.
Chris Campbell, Public Works?
Good evening, Council. The winter operations, we're in full swing on that. During the month of December, we responded to 10 snow and ice events. I think right now, we're up to about 15. We've, we've applied probably a couple, couple thousand tons of salt. And good news there is we have had no issues with getting salt from Cargill. They've responded very quickly. And anytime we've got an order in, we get it within the prescribed time. So that is going very well. When it stops snowing and things dry up, we're out there doing potholes. Last year, we did a total of a little over 8,000 potholes. To, through December, we've done 1,476 potholes. So the crews are out there today, they'll continue to be out there whenever it's not snowing. But again, you know, a lot of those potholes, you do them and you do them and you do them again. So, you know, anytime we've got the opportunity, we will be out there on those. December provided us with a little bit of good weather. We were able to get through the city with our eighth round of leaf pickup, which was, we usually get six or seven rounds. Were able to get eight rounds this year. And well, I tell you what, that last round, we had just a handful of locations. So it looks like we got everything that was out there. I think the only thing that stops people from raking their lawns is the snow. So once it snows, then we're in that mode. Same holds true with branch shipping. We held a special round of branch shipping because of the high winds that we had. And we had a total of, well, I'm not, I don't have the total for that, but for the year, we had just under 4,000 stops for branch shipping. So that, that program's pretty popular. We are moving into some building maintenance as our winter work, when, when time permits. But, you know, at this point, we're, we're focused on that snow and ice and then that pothole patching. So those will be our focus, we'll be out there trying to give, keep everything safe and, and buttoned up. And then we'll work the other projects and as, as we see time allows. And that's my report.
Thank you, Chris. I believe that's all we have this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. Now we move to legislation. We're going to pass over ordinance 126, 2014. It's a request for my property owner to rezone their property from C5 to C3. And this, this ordinance would actually put, allow it to be put on the ballot. But there were some questions raised at a public hearing earlier this evening and we're going to work those out and make sure that we have those researched prior to addressing this. So we're going to move to ordinance 133, 2014.
An ordinance accepting the bid of Trax Construction 30701 Euclid Avenue, Wickliffe, Ohio, 44092, for the Hillsdale Drive improvements.
I make a motion that we adopt ordinance 133, 2014. Mr. Scafidi seconds, discussion?
Yeah, I would just like to say that this is another street in the Glenwood Acres area that has the transite water pipe and that's going to be replaced. We've gone through most of Glenwood Acres, there may be one or two streets left that need to still be changed over from the transite pipe to the, to the, the other water pipe. So, and, and this, this project here, I know there's been some problems there on Hillsdale and hopefully, I need to talk with Amy and get a little further into what it all entails, but there's been some store water issues there as well and hopefully that this project will encompass that and take care of those issues too. So I'm glad to see that this is on the agenda tonight and hopefully we get one more street done. And we're getting closer to completion of what we said we would do some, some years ago by changing out all that water line there. So that's it, thank you.
I think we also discussed that there'd be a resident meeting regarding this improvement on next Tuesday, the 20th, at City Hall, at City Hall, at 6 o'clock at City Hall.
Right.
So, all right. Any other discussion? Shannon, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Ordinance 133, 2014 passes 7-0. Ordinance 134, 2014.
An ordinance determining to proceed with improving Chamberlain Road by constructing a sanitary sewer between certain termini.
I make a motion that we adopt ordinance 134, 2014. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Yates, seconds, discussion? This is simply, again, exactly what it says, it's accepting a bid to continue with the sanitary sewer construction on, on Chamberlain. Shannon, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Ordinance 134, 2014 passes 7-0. Ordinance 136, 2014.
An ordinance authorizing right-of-way donations and temporary easements of city-owned property for the State Route 91 Phase 1 widening improvement project.
I make a motion that we adopt ordinance 136, 2014. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Sorese, seconds, discussion? This is, this is another part of going through the process of widening the 91 between Post and Glenwood. Shannon, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Ordinance 136, 2014 passes 7-0. Ordinance 150, 2014.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Twinsburg, Ohio, to enter into a contract with the Ohio Patrolman's Benevolent Association Patrol Unit.
I make a motion that we adopt ordinance 150, 2014.
That's only on its first read, it stands on its first.
My apologies. Ordinance 01, 2015.
An ordinance establishing membership fees and rates for the Fitness Center in the Parks and Recreation Department.
Resolution 02, 2015.
A resolution amending Resolution 154, 2014, which authorized a limited exception to Section 509.11 of the codified ordinances of the city of Twinsburg prohibiting construction noise during certain hours for the State Route 91 resurfacing project.
I move that we adopt Resolution 02, 2015. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. McDermott, seconds, discussion? Earlier this evening, we talked about the resurfacing of 91 from Hudson through, to Post. And this simply changes the, the time that they're allowed to, to do those grindings. And again, it's to the benefit of the residential areas. Shannon, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Resolution 02, 2015 passes 7-0. Resolution 03, 2015.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into, to an amendment to the Liberty Road Trailhead Local Let Project Agreement with ODOT.
I move that we adopt Resolution 03, 2015. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mrs. Stoffer, seconds, discussion? Simply change order on a project that we're getting significant grant money on. Shannon, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Yates? Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Seraci?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Resolution Zero Three, two thousand and fifteen passes seven zero. I have some motions I'd like to make and get caught up on. First, I'd like to make a motion to extend the rental agreement with the Southeast Golf Car Company for one year for the golf carts that are used at Glen Eagles Golf Course.
I'll second.
Mr. Seraci, seconds. Is there any discussion? Shannon, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Seraci?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
The motion passes seven zero. Next, I'd like to make a motion to amend Resolution One Twenty-five, two thousand and thirteen, to include the property owner's fiancy properties in the CRA agreement with Young Explorers Montessori. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Yates, seconds. The purpose, discussion. The purpose of this is to just upgrade the property owner's name on a CRA agreement as the property was sold. Is there any other discussion? Shannon, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Seraci?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
The motion passes seven zero. Next, I'd like to make a motion that we remove Ordinance One Twenty-seven, two thousand and fourteen, from being tabled, and add it back to our normal agenda. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Seraci, seconds. Any discussion? Shannon, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Seraci?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
The motion passes seven zero. Now, I'd like to make a motion, now that Ordinance One Twenty-seven, two thousand and fourteen, is no longer tabled, that we send that to the Finance Committee for recommendation. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Seraci, seconds. Discussion? Shannon, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Seraci?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes seven zero. Now, we're to miscellaneous. Mr. Scafidi, you have anything?
I have nothing this evening. Thank you.
Mr. Yates?
Nothing this evening.
Mr. McDermott?
I have nothing.
Mrs. Stoffer?
I guess I didn't say Happy New Year to everyone, and welcome back, and I'd also...
I thought you were gonna talk about Ohio State.
Yeah, well, that was my next thing. Go Bucks! That's all I have. That's all I had. Go Bucks!
Mr. Seraci?
Yes. I just wanted to say that I was fortunate enough to participate in the breakfast with Santa, and then the next day, the Santa Gift Run, and it was just a blast to be a participant in those and to help out. It was great seeing, delivering all those gifts all over Twinsburg and seeing the faces of those kids, and we had a good time. And thanks to everybody involved for setting it up. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Roden?
I'd be upset if I didn't say thank you to Derek for decorating for the Hanukkah party. Thanks for all the council people who came to the Hanukkah. It was great. It was amazing. I think everyone was looking at each other and said, who knew this? There are many Jews in Twinsburg. So it was actually kind of fun to see who came out, and there were other people who weren't Jewish who were learning like yourselves, and I appreciate all the support. So it was great, and we had a good time, and we're hoping to have this continue. And I also thank Mr. Post as well, because he was instrumental, and his whole family, actually, in helping getting it done. So thank you very much, and Happy New Year to everybody. That's it.
Mayor Prokop?
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
Mr. Maestros?
Nothing. Thank you.
Shannon?
Nothing. Thank you.
Okay. And then at this time, I'd like to make a motion to enter an executive session for the purposes of litigation and...
Personnel.
Personnel. Thank you. Zero second. Mr. Seraci, seconds. Discussion? Shannon, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Seraci?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Yates? Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
The motion passes seven zero. At the end of the executive session, I'll come back and report that we've completed the meeting, and no other action will be taken this evening. Thank you very much, and good night.